So what we ended up doing was just graveling that and we're gonna go back to the drawing board, talking to the Parks Commission and they thought that we could just get the engineering done like after the summer for like next year's budget. And we can do it correctly. So for now, the banks may force us to gravel up there.
I just, yeah, so I would just, you know, I mean, I, I, I'm okay with it, I guess. Only because if, you know, we can, it's, we own the property already. It's maybe underutilized and it's gravel, it's flat. We could get it paved. It just seems like, you know, we're providing three more spaces for the business that's adjacent to it without any cost to them.
Yeah.
And where there already is about, what is it, about seventy parking spaces down there? So.
Are you talking about the three inch?
Yeah, that's the state of parking area in front of you.
That doesn't belong to Dockside.
No, no, it's adjacent to it. It's right next door.
Yeah.
It's kinda used for the stage area and area for events, I guess. It's kind of an event pad too, according to parking. But I tried to see if I could get ADA in there because we are lacking ADA down in Port without taking away like two spots.
That's a really good idea.
But it creates three good sized models, parking spots, so a truck can get in there. And but it's not just for them. There's not gonna be any restricted parking for any business owners, public parking.
You know, that, that area is, excuse me, what? That area was used over the years anyway. And during the busy season, there were generally about three vehicles got in there.
Yeah.
But now it just looks a lot better. It's a nicer staging area for our, I believe, flowers.
It's also gonna create a path for the dumpster there. There used to be a telephone booth years ago right there. And the dumpster kinda sits precariously on that old path, so this asphalt will overlay that and create a little area also by the telephone pole.
Is there any way that we can, I don't know, fix a sign or is there anything that displays, displays that it's public parking? So people don't think that it's, because the way it's situated, that it's private parking.
Yeah, absolutely. I was thinking, I had a lot of folks complaining up in that area that a lot of boat trailers and I guess come to find out that when you have a GPS and you are coming into Depot Bay, you have a boat, say at four o'clock or five in the morning, and you're coming from the north into Depot Bay, that Garmin and your Jell-O and all these GPS has the, to the boat ramp, turn at the light. And the boats turn at the light and they go down to the, to get to the boat station. Because as the road flies, the boat line is right here. And they get turned around and they get down by the community hall or by, I call it Grace's Land, but it's Harper Lights and I think it's got a new name now. They try to turn around and they're in the boat. And it's become quite a problem. So we're looking at maybe getting some better signage by the community hall that says, there's one there, but it's paved and kinda rusty. So at that time, I think we could get absolutely some more public parking. We have some extra signs that, that we've had in store too that have the label saying, "Wants this public parking." So we can install those down there while we're upgrading the signs to let folks know that the boat ramp is not down located in this area. So unfortunately, it's just, I didn't really know. Anyways, sorry to take so long.
Okay.
Oh. Mr. Mayor, I'm willing to approve both bids from Road and Driveway for the paving of Dockside Parking. Dockside Parking. That's what it says. It says it right there, Dockside Parking.
For the city's parking areas in the harbor.
And for the, we have a baby unit.
One second. And more discussion on this tonight.
I didn't know they called it that.
Call please.
Wyson?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Matt Laugh?
Yes.
Grant?
Hi.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Any correspondence? We have a couple of items of correspondence. The City of Lincoln City is offering any of you to, it is a free training opportunity for public officials. Ethics training presented by the Oregon Government Ethics Commission. It will be in Lincoln City at the council chambers. Looking for the date.
There we go.
Thank you. So it's a one and a half hour session. There are one, two, three, four sessions you can sign up for. So they're just, they put the word out. If anybody's interested, you can make these, you know, please let Kathy Spear know. That's a, that's a good opportunity to get some training if you're interested.
Is, is this different, this is different than the LOC training we had on ethics, correct?
Well, this training, I mean, the trainers are from the Oregon Government Ethics Commission, so I don't know if it's that much different, but it's coming from the boss's mouth, so it should be good. Anyway, if you're interested, just, like you say, the contact information for Kathy is on the bottom of the letter. The other item, of course, bonded is from the League of Oregon Cities and it's that kind of year again. They have, you all should have a rather thick little packet attached to a cover letter. They're asking each and every city for feedback on your top four legislative priorities that you would like the League of Oregon Cities to carry the torch on in this upcoming legislative session. The deadline for the response is not until July twenty second. So presenting this as a correspondence item this evening, asking if you would consider putting it either on the next council agenda or the second council meeting in July is before the twenty second. I think it's the nineteenth. This is something that they ask for every year.
Yeah, well, it's like, shouldn't be too difficult, so I'll just put it on the next agenda.
Put it on the next, okay, we'll do it, alright. And you should have in that packet should be the, their one-on-one list of things to pick from to kinda narrow down the four, four priorities for the city. That's the only correspondence I have, but I know Brady's got some lengthy staff reports, but I have two very, I think, being shorter ones. Can I go first? Mayor Matt Laugh is going to attend the OMA, Oregon Mayor's Association Conference, which is going to be at Salisham this year. The, gonna request your authorization for the expenses. So the expenses consist of registration costs for the conference. It's July twenty first through the twenty third. One night of lodging, a little bit per mile each. And then a fee for the Sunday after the conference. There's gonna be a fishing trip that actually was our mayor's idea for conference attendees that they're interested to sign up for. So the total estimated cost for all of those expenses is five hundred sixty nine dollars and eighteen cents. So I would ask for your authorization for our, our policy.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve that amount plus, plus two hundred dollars, so seven hundred dollars, just in case there's an emergency.
Second.
Call please.
Plus two hundred, okay. Gambino?
Yes.
Matt Laugh?
Yes.
Grant?
Hi.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Wyson?
Yes.
Okay, the only other thing I have at another conference, you all should have gotten your copy of the League of Oregon Cities, their magazine, The Local Focus, the June one. Anyway, in there, I just made a copy of the page. It's like page eight. The ninety first Annual League of Oregon Cities Conference will be September twenty ninth through October first. And apparently it's going to be in Salem this year. If any of you are interested in going, please let me know, like, oh, like by the next meeting would be really good. So I can generate the costs and get that kinda authorization thing going. So if you just let, you know, appreciate it.
And which one is that for?
That's the, the League of Oregon Cities this fall.
Oh.
Yeah. And you, you usually go to those, but like you say, if any councilor wants to go, please let me know. And then we can figure out registration costs and get the authorization so we can get things going.
Was that the one, C nine two as well?
Yes, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's every fall they have their conference. I think last year it was in Bend. So it kinda travels around, around the state. But yeah, please let me know. And that's all.
Alright, we have another item. Just a memorandum from Mayor. I was, I've been down to the Harbor Course during this season that's coming into our busy season. And there are dozens of users of that Harbor, private and also people that are paying for the trips. Anyway, two toilets don't cut it. We got a woman's toilet and a men's toilet. And we've got dozens of people using that one facility. So what I had in mind was that possibly we could put three of these portable toilets at strategic areas in the lower part of the, the parking area. So these other people now, the other users aren't restricted to trying to get through the, the processing lines there at the Dockside just to get to the public bathrooms. So I just wanted to get three, three extra, or three of these units just for the, the summer season.
Perry, do we have a cost on, see, those approximate?
You know, the only amount that springs into my mind is when the bin clipping occurs. We always rent a porta potty for bin clippers, something like the reservoir. It's like seventy dollars for a day. But I bet they have a weekly rate or some monthly rate there.
I'm sure they have.
What do you have in mind, Mayor? Or do you want, do we have a, what do we put it in, in our budget as? I don't wanna see people going out in the woods. So.
I could, I could, I could put up maybe some signage that were, you know, that suggests that down the foot trail, they could use the other bathrooms also. If those are available, plus a couple, two or three porta potties, like the mayor said, maybe along the back. Or I'll, I'll, I could talk to the neighbors and find out if, if things do, you know.
Okay, where are the?
I don't wanna put something in and then have somebody complain that their guests are looking at it. So I'm sure we can find spots and then.
We're on the cusp of the season, so timing this is in order.
Yeah. And I always thought too, putting something to let folks know that there's restrooms down at Ravel Road too, so I'm sure that would.
Well, we use these units for the grant fee and the fleet of flowers. And we, you know, our guests that come to this town deserve some consideration. And so I was, I was looking at that the last couple of weeks. My God, they have to fight to get to those two toilets.
So. Yeah, they maintain them. Some of the cost is for them to come and maintain them.
Sounds right, yeah. So, okay, is that something we can take action on tonight first?
I think so.
Yeah, just motion. I just don't know what the cost would be.
I don't, I don't believe it. Like you say, I know it's like seventy dollars for a day, but I'm just assuming there's a yearly rate.
The rates are less for everybody on a monthly fee. In the arse for a couple of days. Dropping it off and picking it up is quite expensive. Do it one day, that's why it's seventy bucks.
So do we need to set a dollar amount?
Let's see if I have number two.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we set aside three thousand dollars to rent three porta potties for, to be placed at Brady's discretion down at the Harbor.
One second.
Call please.
Matt Laugh?
Yes.
Grant?
Hi.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Wyson?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
I have, I have like four, anybody? Brady, you're up.
Okay, so, ODOT, Oregon State Department of Highway Department, I drew this up. What ODOT is going to do, so this, this area is located south of town. Little Well Cove entrance, Oceanus Street. Is everybody familiar with that? Okay, what ODOT wants to do is they wanna replace big, there's two creeks that run through here. They're down. As you go along the highway, you'll see these ravines, like the road's flat, but there's some deep ravines in here. They wanna replace these culverts. And they wanna expedite this. And they're telling us that your water mains are in our way and we want you to move them. And it's wrote up in some ordinance thing that the city signed years ago that says that if you're in there right of way and they need that area, that you have to move your stuff. So not only the city, but the gas, Northwest Natural Gas has to move a five inch gas main for them. And also PUD has to relocate poles and power lines. And this all has to happen by, we have to have the lines moved by August nineteenth, is what they're saying. Now, there's two spots. They're concentrating on one right now, but if their funding comes in, they wanna do both. So what, what this is gonna require is there's a six inch Rocky Creek line that feeds raw water. And we're actually gonna be depending on that when our reservoir's down and being dredged and we're into our urban dam. We are totally, one hundred percent relying on Rocky Creek to keep us. So it really put a dent in our plans for this summer. Plus, they didn't let us know because they, they, they first told us like a week ago that we had to do this. And then the other line is the eight inch main that feeds Morocco. So there's two lines kinda side by side. And this is off, there's kind of a little side utility road with power lines running. When you're going down the highway, you can kinda see it off to the, to the left. So I made this drawing over here. So, so here's Rocky Creek six inch. And then the, the eight inch Morocco distribution line. This is finished water, this is raw water. But you, you basically have to cut, cut the pie and put this high dents poly in, which is a bendable flexible wire that goes on the surface. You, you connect these, you cut it, connect it, and then you transfer these lines like up some highway say, out of their way and then hook it back up. I don't know if we go through the outside, through the woods and back. They don't really care. They just wanna have enough room around this, this area right here to, to, to put their equipment in and build access roads to, to their work site. This side is absolutely, there's nothing in there, so we're fine over here. It, it just, unfortunately, there's gas, there's power, which is a concern of ours. But we may have to work with the, the gas company to share a ditch, maybe if they want this, if we don't want it on the surface. But it's gonna be quite costly and the guy said, "We really don't have a choice. We, we, we really have to do this."
How deep are your, are the water lines?
It's approximately anywhere from thirty-six inches to forty-eight. So somewhere a little, a little deeper than three feet.
So when it's, when it's put back on line, it'll be on top of those culverts?
Yes. Yes. So we have to sever the line, put the temporary line in, and then, and then when they're off down, put the original lines back.
So they just wanna get in there and do their digging without having to worry about anything?
They, their first proposal was they may not be in the way and we would just have to watch them. But now the depth in there, the, the work they have to do because the creeks are so deep that they won't. And their, their culverts are pretty bad and they're, they're, they're trying to expedite this because it's in danger of, if there's another heavy rain, that it could collapse the highways that these culverts are.
Do we have to hire any other equipment or people to come help us?
Yeah, we would have to hire a contractor to relocate the lines. And then the city would have to purchase the bypass material. And we'd have to, I would have to like in-house engineer how to do this.
We had a plan for that in our budget, so anyway, we're gonna get this money.
I, I thought what I would do is if the council would like, I'd like to give all the information to our attorney and have him review it and see if there was any way that we could ask for an extension or if they could, you know, because of our town will be out of water. Say if something happened and we couldn't get Rocky Creek water to our plant, we have no north reservoir and we have no way of making water. So it's, it's really vital to our, the county's public health.
Do we, Perry, do, do we have, how much do we have in unallocated funds?
Eight bucks, sir.
In our budget? Okay, so.
We do have contingency in, in every budget. This would normally, because it's temporary work, gonna be putting back, so it wouldn't be a capital outlay item. It would be more maintenance, so it'd come out of the materials and services. It's something that we're just, we have no choice. We just have to do it. So we'll figure out how, where the money's gonna, it'll come out of the water.
So do we need, do we need a motion?
I'm thinking that, not at this point, but I think, I'm gathering information and just letting the council know that we just found this out. And I, I think I should have Pete look at this stuff and give him all the emails that I made from this Brian Thomas of ODOT. And it's really unfortunate that, you know, stuff like this happens. It's pretty, you know, we're on their right of way. So they could dictate what, what, when to give our utilities, which I was, I didn't, I didn't think it was this bad. I thought they would have a, a more professional way, it's no way ahead, like a year ahead of time.
Look at what, but, but look at what they've been doing in time for twenty, for twenty years. You know, I mean, come on, they, they.
No funding available. I asked, I asked all the right questions at first and, and told them about the public health issues and emergency water line that is gonna be there. And he said, "Well, we're letting you know. You have till August nineteenth." Which, something like this to me doesn't seem, it seems pretty short.
Yes, you're right.
Brady, did you mention that we would probably go with flex line above the surface?
Yeah. Most, most of the time in a situation like this, like when we have a, the lines caved in and that this poly works great for on the ground. It's almost like a, a polyethylene pipe, but it's pressure, it's for pressure water.
Okay. For, the reason I'm asking is you said, one way we could do is go down into the woods.
Mm-hmm.
Another way, another way is right along the highway.
Mm-hmm, and then tie back. So either way.
Life of one would suggest, even if it costs more, we go down through the woods simply for security and, right.
And I, I've been trying to come up with other ways, like maybe the Morocco line could be fed through, if the valve, valve was installed at Oceanus. There's another water line that, that actually comes through, Little Well Cove is over here. And then there's a, there's the way, a water line meanders through Little Well Cove and then comes through Oceanus and could feed Morocco. And then we could just shut that valve there and then, and then also shut it out on the highway and isolate the eight inch. So they would be fed through Little Well Cove. Morocco would still, they may not have the fire flows for that time, but they would definitely have water for their homes and the restaurant. But, and then all we have to do is worry about meandering Rocky Creek, keeping Rocky Creek.
What did they say their tie line?
They wanna move by August nineteenth.
No, I mean, once they start, how long is it gonna take them?
Oh, probably, they, they, they said October something was their, their stop date. Yeah, so it's.
So are they gonna tie it for the one oh one?
Yeah, they're gonna, yeah. Well, no, they're gonna slip line. Actually, these, these pipes go in and they're not gonna, they're, they're non-escalating. They're gonna go right through the same pipe with the new line.
Is, is it of your opinion that we should involve our city attorney and necessarily if we can get some relief of some kind?
Yeah, like just to see if there's a window of, and I know that Northwest Natural has their legal on their end too. Because they don't wanna have to move theirs or they would like to plan for it.
If he contacted them and anybody else that's involved, it might be.
Yeah, if PUD also, they have to move their poles and their line has to be tented. It's, it's a pretty big thing.
Alright, so we need a motion on it?
I think so at this point. Or, oh, to, to, like the attorney though?
To get the extra money.
Oh, to like Pete.
Yeah, sure.
If everybody's okay with Brady calling Pete and saying, "Hey, did he help us out?"
Or if he sees anything or any window of something, right?
Yeah, you know, okay, thank you.
So against our most powerful state agency.
Anyway, unfortunately, that's, that's why I said it may affect our reservoir job. So what I'm thinking is we may have to dredge the reservoir instead of rebuilding the urban dam, fill the reservoir back up. So we have that storage of water to run the town on because, say, Rocky Creek maybe, you know, it's temporary and, you know, it's, our whole town would rely on.
I don't like talking about.
Rocky Creek. I know, I'd like to keep, like if we do that job, just do the whole thing.
Right. And that urban dam is all it is, you know, it's.
Yeah. So it needs to have the new platform built with the new gate put in. Wow, yeah, so, yeah, it's the big decisions to make. But I guess what I'm wondering is ODOT figures out their budget and what exactly they're gonna do. But we know they're gonna do one of these. If they could go, then I don't know if it's gonna be two transitions or one big long bypass. Because there are quite a ways between, it looks close on my thing, but there are quite a ways. As you drive down the highway, you'll see one deep ravine and then you go about a hundred yards and you see another deep ravine. So that bypass or the temporary line would be quite extensive if we had to tie both of them in for that way, so.
How long would we be using these flexible pipes and could we leave them there for a while? Would the life through route route is done and, and the other priorities taken care of?
Yeah, we could, yeah, we could leave those tented and not have, you know, when they're all done, we could go back and replace our lines maybe later, yeah.
Maybe we oughta look into that in support.
As we can all, as, as long as we get Rocky Creek running through and if we could valve Morocco water through Little Well Cove and up Oceanus, that's probably a, a good window to look into of, of what could see happening. So I don't think we'll need to get engineering on board, maybe. But we could probably just hire a good contractor and have this bypass put in, develop the pipe and something that these local guys can do between rain rate and WW construction and/or enterprise. There's half, there's a lot of them that do this, so.
Okay, well.
That's, that's the big one I had.
Keep us in the loop.
Yeah, I will. I'll know more by next meeting.
Do you have, Oceanus have their own source of water that they, from the past that they keep active?
They do, but it's not potable. It's from the mountains and they use it for irrigation. So.
I know that came up much before.
Yeah. Dick Johnson, when he said years ago that they had, they had that plumbed in there. Yeah, Dick Johnson, when he said years ago that they had, uh, they had that plumbed in their house, that one. Um, that's about it, the crew's been working on the new, uh, water meter, uh, software and the new devices. So, we're in a transition right now, so it's taking a lot of time. We hired a new, um, weed eater kid, he's doing a bang job, and if you see him busy all through town, we're getting the roads in, in shape and weeds cut, and, uh, the new harbor guy, temporary harbor, uh, guy's working out great too, so. Um, both, both hires, uh, tent hires have been really nice, so thank, thank, I thank the council for letting me, uh, have the opportunity to get those guys, because it's, it's put a huge relief on backup projects, so. Other than that, if the council is meaning for me, I can answer.
Terry.
Terry, okay. Alright, that's it.
Do you want to?
I'm done.
Go ahead.
So, you're, Purry, would you like to make your comment?
People, are you talking about my, my memorandum? I didn't bring my copy, so you all have a copy.
Do you want me to read it?
This one is you all.
I've, I've read it, I've read it, thanks, Mary.
Yeah, I know, but she needs, oh, she needs her copy.
You want me to read it, okay. How you doing with me? Um, this is to you all, um, it's my retirement announcement. And I just want to let you know that I am retiring from the city. My last planned work day is January sixth of twenty seventeen. So, kind of wanted to give you a lead time to work on, um, you know, finding somebody to step in, into the position. And I just want to say it's been great working with you guys, and it's going to be great working with you guys. And so, it's been a real honor for me to work for the city of all of you.
Thank you, Brady, thank you. One of the council comments? You'd like to start? Joe?
Um, well, I have lots of comments, but I think at this point I'm going to stick to Facebook, so. Well, it's, uh, technology's way of, of keeping you from fighting with your spouse.
Is it really?
It's right.
Michael Strachan's on there.
Um, just a reminder about the cascade eventation, and don't worry tomorrow night.
Oh, I didn't bring that up, thank you for reminding me, that's tomorrow. I hope everybody makes it, uh, we're going to be, uh, it starts at six. And I've been putting notices up and trying to let people know and spreading the.
Yeah, it's been all over.
Yeah, Jenny is great, she's very informative and, uh, every seminar she does is different. She, she, uh, she gets an idea of what the crowd is and then she goes from there, so, I agree.
And Brady's making cookies.
Yep.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's in the keeper or.
Yeah.
Cool.
Other than that, I have nothing at this time.
Robert?
Um, I, I think the only comment I can make is that, uh, Purry, you're going to be sorely missed.
Thank you.
And my short tenure with you has been exceptional and quite normal.
It's good fun, it's going to be fun, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Have you thought about running for city council?
Yeah.
You know, I have.
Hardwood Commission?
No, I have not, I have not, how's that?
Oh, uh, so, uh, I will, I, my comment would be to Purry that, uh, you're I, I will just say that a friend of mine who's the, uh, who had spoken to Purry years before I was part of his council, that's now the, uh, port, the port manager down in Newport. Kevin Green, uh, when your head came up, uh, he spoke very highly of you, I, I don't know if you know that.
I, I didn't, but I think.
Uh, he, he spoke about Pur, Purry's knowledge of the city and, and just generally speaking, how competent he believed that, that she was, just, uh, he could, he had some accolades. I don't know you that well, so, I think he was even working on, uh, she gave him some information once upon a time when he was working on his, uh, graduate project.
Well, and I specifically remember when he was up at Garrett Baldi and sort of kind of projects, yeah, we communicated. Actually, I never met him until he got, got me to Newport, so, just a lot of phone calls and emails. Yeah, he's, he's a, um, he's a wonderful guy.
Yes.
Uh, Purry, I just wanted to say to you and everybody else that we have six glorious months ahead of us. And while we've got her at the helm, let's make the motion.
Let's do it.
And we, and I also wanted to say that you are a real true Purry, and I, I want to love you like a sister. Thank you so much. Anybody else?
Well, one, just one thing, uh, can, just, did anybody mention any guesses? Was, uh, because I can't find it inside the magazine, I've got a guess. What street that, I mean, where is, what city that street is in?
Ninety?
No, don't think so, maybe.
Maybe.
My, my guess is Nantucket.
Oh, that's there, yeah.
Right?
You think?
Maybe, yeah, there's a San Newton right there, I've been there many times.
Really picture?
I didn't like it to color.
Not my idea.
Yes. I'm kind of tapping in Seaside for the relief picture.
It's eleven, eleven minutes past hour of line, we're during, I need pictures.